So the first question is, should the eight-week lame duck period between election day and the beginning of the new term be reduced? The relevant charter section is Section 2.1B, which just sets out the term of office and the calendar that the term begins on the first Monday in January following the regular election. So we think the league principles, good government principles that are impacted by this are accountability and public participation. The lame duck period right now is November and December in odd-numbered years, which is when we have our elections. Shortening the lame duck period now that's in place after elections and before inauguration of newly-elected councillors would provide less time when councillors who are departing for whatever reason, they may have just decided to retire, they may not have won their race or whatever, it would be less time for them to be engaging in major decision-making when they might be less accountable to voters. Another problem is that December and November obviously include the winter holidays, when people are generally not closely looking at what local government is doing. So the current structure of having the full eight weeks that run through November and December might possibly be limited. Our experiences, that we've had two lame duck periods so far, one in 2021, one in 2023 after the elections, and during both of those periods, the council met more than usual and adopted major legislation. And it has actually been been meeting more and more in November and December of each year. Best practices, other towns with council-manager governments have shorter lame duck periods, including Franklin, Bridgewater, and Barnstable have just two weeks between election and taking their seats. Palmer has three weeks, and East Long Matter has four weeks. So that's all I'm going to say about that, and now we're opening it up to your comments. So you can put them in the chat, or if you, we would prefer that you put them in the chat. If you, for some reason can't, you can raise your hand.
Comments and questions, any questions?
Well, this is Adrian Turisi. With 15 participants, and to move this along, the chat can get rather sticky in that to be able to hear questions that you both take as well as to try to follow it on the chat is a little problematic for me. So I wonder if you would be open to just having hands raised at this point in time and then have someone else at the back end check the chat. I'm not good being able to chat and listen.
We anticipated that there would be people who wouldn't want to use the chat. So if you, if you have a comment now, Adrian, why don't you give it?
Thank you. Thank you, Darcy. Thank you, legal women voters, for kickstarting such an important process. One of the questions I have would be regarding, give us a couple of examples of the major legislation adopted during the 2021 and 2023 period that have been problematic in terms of our league's good government principles. One or two.
There was a zoning package that was passed. If you look at the the meeting schedule for November and December of each year, you can see that the, especially starting in 2021, there were eight meetings during November and December. And so that is like a very heavy load compared to any other time of the year. And that, I know that's not answering your question, but we can come up with some answers to that. But there were some, the major legislation passed during, for example, 2021, during those eight meetings that were held. Sorry that I'm not more specific.
Well, I think as you go forward, it would be very helpful, since there were an increased number of meetings, given your data, that the league stands behind everything we say. So those of us who pay attention are not necessarily going to remember what those pieces of legislation were. So it just adds the rationale behind the statement. Thanks so much.
Okay, other comments?
There's two in the chat, or three in the chat, Darcy.
Oh, Rebecca, could you read them?
Yep. Okay, what does the league mean by accountable to the voters? I don't feel that this is a major issue.
I guess, I, like I, like we said, we don't have the answers to all of this, but accountability would mean that they, since they're leaving office, they don't necessarily have to be representing their constituents during the lame duck period. They have, they're not running for election again. So that means they're, any elected official who is finishing up his or her term is not accountable to the voters during that last period of time.
We have a question, is it legal to shorten that period? I think the person means the lame duck period.
Yeah, these other towns have shorter periods.
If I may just jump in quickly, one of the early slides from the introduction, I mean, it talks about the different pathways to charter change, and there, you know, are a variety of different ways that towns go about altering their charters. One is through Special Act of the Legislature, another is two-thirds vote of the city council and approval of the Attorney General's office. So there's, there's a variety of different methods. A charter commission is required to make changes to the legislative body. So the lame duck period would probably fall under that category. So it would have to be a recommendation by a town charter commission, but commissions are created in these communities for the purposes of amendment. It's not unusual.
Did you have a comment, Kitty?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I think Marla answered it. You know, because I know that the charter, not everything is possible to do. Like, I think we can't change the number of precincts or districts. So I just want to be careful about brainstorming about things that can't, are not legally able to be done, unfortunately.
We don't know whether this falls within the scope of of the review.
Okay.
If I may just add, I mean, this is certainly something that could be done. It's just a question of determining what the appropriate pathway is, and then pursuing that pathway. Towns do have, under the home rule laws, do have a great deal of latitude about how local government is going to run. As far as districting, I think that's right. I mean, there's, there's state law that would come into play there, having to do with population density and other factors. But in terms of things like the local election lame duck period, that is a change that can be made through one of the many paths to charter revision.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I asked the same, can I talk?
Yes.
I asked the same question in the chat that Adrian asked, but I want to go a step further. Even if you can't tell us specifically what some of those things were, when, when you're talking about activity, many times, things don't come to a vote for several weeks and and councillors are working on projects up until they depart. So, for example, if a councillor has been working on a specific amendment, and then they're told they have to leave, that means that they are no longer getting up as a councillor and saying, "When I worked on this amendment, it was because," you know? So I mean, accountability and responsiveness to your constituents are important things that develop over a period of time. So has anyone actually specifically complained about that length of time?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, and I think the, the piece of it that has to do with it falling in the winter holidays, that has been complained about quite a bit. Kitty?
Yeah, as I recall, last one year, there were so many meetings that took place over the holiday season, and a number of councillors couldn't make it to those meetings because they were with their families, whatever. And that was really contest, you know, that was, people were not happy about that. And also, people were not happy, and I too don't recall the exact measures that were passed or, you know, voted on, but there were a slew of very important measures, mostly zoning, I think, squeezed in right at the end, and there were lots of complaints about that. Unfortunately, I don't remember what the measures were.
Except that zoning is, does not just happen overnight. There's a hearing at one meeting and a discussion and
But the final vote, everything was rushed, everything was rushed through, so that, you know, they'd had their hearings and all, but people still wanted it to, didn't it was, it was very rushed, people were very upset, they didn't want to give up their Christmas, you know, and New Year's vacations in order to rush these measures through.
So they shouldn't have met.
May I just chime in to why this is an issue? I think the question of why or how is a, how it's an issue is a great question, because I mean, a zoning proposal, given the requirements of two readings and this and that and the other thing, couldn't be rushed through in a two-week timeframe that a town like Franklin or Bridgewater or Barnstable have. But a zoning proposal could be rushed through in the, I believe it's three, four months that Amherst has. So the, I mean, it's just a matter of how many meetings and how many readings are necessary. Those readings couldn't be done in two weeks, but they could be done in a few months.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on. There's no more comments in the, in the chat?
No.
Okay. So next question, should the number of consecutive terms a councillor may serve be limited? In other words, should we have term limits for councillors? The relevant charter section is 2.1B. There is no mention of term limits in that section. So we, some of our research was looking at Collins Center, which is a, which is a part of UMass, who, that helps municipalities with this type of thing with charter commissions, and they were the consultant for the 2016 Charter Commission. And in a 2016 memo, they wrote these bullet points for the rationale for possible term limits. And so it was the potential for increasing new ideas, new community leaders and community involvement, so more public participation. It likely encourages more people to run for election because open seats more often draw multiple candidates, and often incumbent seats are not contested. So in other words, we would, would be more likely to have a more diverse crew. May encourage diversity, enabling opportunities for women and minorities. Potentially, for purposes of efficiency, it focuses elected officials on accomplishing things within a timeline. And for school committees, it may increase the likelihood that members have children that are active in the school system. So so our experience over the first five years, in 2023, all incumbents but one won their council races. There was some indication that residents might, may be discouraged from running by the incumbent name recognition advantage. And uncontested races complicate the term limits issue by giving potential unlimited terms to individuals who are seated in uncontested races. So in 2021, three of the five district races were uncontested, and in 2023, one was uncontested. Let me just see, best practices, just some examples, our own Appointed Committee Handbook for Town Manager Committees generally sets the normal length of a term on a town committee to be two, three-year terms. This structure facilitates turnover and public participation. And also, as far as elected officials at a minimum, we found that Methuen, Southbridge, and Newton have term limits for major elected bodies. I'm not going to read all of that. And in all cases of term limits, elected officials are allowed to run for office again if they take time off once the term has expired. So and the Collins Center addressed the topic of why, if term limits are favored by voters, why aren't they enacted? And they, they came up with these potential reasons why they haven't been generally enacted. They said, people more intimately involved in governmental functions are typically those who decide the issue, like charter commissions. There's often a status quo bias, and few examples to look toward in neighboring municipalities. And some of the anticipated benefits of term limits, such as more diversity, don't always come to fruition. So we found that interesting to, because it seems to fulfill league good government principles. So we were curious as to why it hasn't been enacted more. So questions and comments? Hilda? Do you have to unmute?
I did. And, and there are several pros and cons here. One is the issue of the learning curve. It takes a while to figure out exactly how to get things done, and, and what people may or may not know when they run for town government. The other thing is, we beat the bushes trying to get people to run for several of these elections, and it's very difficult to find people who really don't already have an agenda and are open-minded. People who are very active in town meeting. I'm happy about, number one, the time commitment that's required, because all of the committees are so incestual, that you have three or four people on a finance committee, or a CRC, or a government, or whatever. And that gives you three or four votes towards the six or seven required to pass something. And it takes a tremendous amount of time of them to, to get anything done. And I'm, I'm just not happy with the government as it stands. I, I don't think it's representative of very many people, because people, at least looking at the number of people who have been voting on very important issues like the library and the school, are very small proportions of the registered voters. And they get quoted as Amherst is very much in favor of something or something or other, and it represents very few people. And so I don't, we might want to change town limits, but I just don't have any confidence that it would be very effective.
Okay, thank you, Hilda. Other comments? We have anything in the chat?
Yes, I have someone who says, yes, I'm in favor of term limits at all levels of government. I am also in favor of term limits for council president and vice president, although I would accept wording that talks about consecutive terms.
Any other comments? Okay. This is a fairly big issue.
It is a huge issue. Let me, let me chime in here for a moment. I think that we haven't real, we've had five years of, of experience here with, with this particular charter section. And as I think of the complexity of this question, it really is all-encompassing. That, I don't know what your survey showed earlier for this, that while I lean towards term limits, I don't think I have enough data to suggest that that would enact all of the Collins positions on why it's a good idea. So I'm really straddling, I'm not sure at this point. I hope that's helpful. It's just out here from the South Amherst, South Amherst District Five people, myself.
I agree with Adrian. The idea of term limits is fine, depending on what we're talking about in time, but, but Hilda's right about learning curve, because it, well, Darcy, you ought to tell us about it. You were there. That didn't take, well, you, you were there from the onset. It must have taken you all a long time.
Yeah, it is, it definitely takes a term, at least a year, but maybe a full term to, to really understand what's going on.
I think so.
Michael has his hand up.
Michael, you need to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know whether you want this discussion to be back and forth or not. I'd like to respond to Hilda, but I don't want to do that if that's not what the discussion requires.
We want, want your opinion on term limits.
I mean, I put my opinion in the chat. But it wasn't identified as my opinion, and I was, I don't know what to do with, if I have a different perspective on something that somebody has said.
The other thing I must just add is, we not to take an opinion to one side or the other of whether you should interact with Hilda, but we are trying to restrict people to three minutes in total, and 15 minutes per topic or issue with a goal of ending the meeting at 3:30, I believe. So that I am trying to be in track, in charge of time, per Darcy's request. But I should have mentioned that earlier in the meeting and just figured to put it on people's radar.
I would like to hear what Michael has to say, because he's very intelligent and very thoughtful.
I don't think I'll open my mouth after that, but
Three minutes, Michael.
No, I mean, I, I am not, the issue of the learning curve, I think there are two things to say about that. One is, people who are going to run for a position on town council are unlikely to come at this as new people to town government. But that may still be the case. The other thing is, if it takes, if it takes a year to learn, that's fine. For most people, I would think the learning curve never stops. And the third thing I would say is that maybe not learning some of the accepted things would be a good way to examine and change those things. So I'm not concerned about the learning curve issue. I acknowledge that it's an issue. But I think having fresh eyes and fresh ears and not, not accepting the way things are done might be a very healthy thing in a new member of the town council. Thank you.
Most, most of the term limits that we saw were somewhere around between like six and nine years. So it's still a good, long, healthy period of time, and they all allowed, after a period of time, for the people to come back and try again. So it's, you know, I think that it's, that it's worth looking at just for the issue of getting new, new ideas and so, so forth. Any other comments?
I would just like to point out the issue of single-issue candidates, or candidates that have their own agendas that may not necessarily be the agenda of everybody else. And I think we know who I'm talking about.
Okay, so, Darcy, I think, are you doing the next one?
Yes. Okay. Let's see. Question three, should the charter limit the number of one-year terms served by the town council president? Some people have already mentioned that. The, the relevant charter section is 2.2A, says the council shall elect a president who shall serve for a one-year term, and a vice president who shall serve for a one-year term. The method of election of the president and vice president shall be consistent with the rules of the council, which is all that it says. So the rationale for a possible charter amendment would be for a couple of reasons, mostly to do with allowing more diverse participation. So the same good government principles would apply for this term limit argument as for the term limit for councillors in general. So a change in the presidency can allow for new leaders diverse participation. Currently, a council president could be elected in an uncontested race. This is just more, more reasons why it would be good not to have unlimited ability to, to an unlimited term. A council president could be elected in an uncontested race or in a district race, meaning elected by a very small number of voters in town, and nonetheless hold the council leadership position for an unlimited number of years. So I think that that is something that, you know, could Uh, I think that that is something that, you know, could be a potential charter amendment. So that's all we have on that and we are now. I don't have another slide on this. Let's see, no. Uh, and we didn't do more slides because the, the, the reasons were the same as with the term limits for counselors in general. So comments? Uh, Michael? You're muted.
I put a comment on the chat and it really applies to both of these issues, which is, in addition to what I said before. I am concerned with the power of incumbency at all levels of government. We like to think that it's a, uh, the playing field is the same in races, but we know that incumbents have a. Great deal of power through name recognition. And the fact that they've been out talking to their constituents, uh, for at least two years. And new candidates have a difficult time doing it. Now, in terms of the council president. This applies both to the charter and also to the rules of procedure. This is a very powerful position and I'm very concerned about concentration of power. So that's why I'm, I'm in favor of term limits for the presidency and vice presidency.
Thank you. Other, other comments?
I, I'd like to chime in. I'm still looking for my hand up, Darcy.
It's okay, go ahead, Adrian.
Yeah, but it's Adrian. So I have some very strong opinions when it comes to what we can and can't do with this charter commission. Um, I strongly favor that a president only come from an at-large position. Uh, and the at-large positions, granted, we only have three townwide. But for me, that has certain demands, uh, on a council president. And were, were the, were the league to eventually come down in its study on term limits? As I mentioned earlier, I'm, I'm right now not of a single mind, but I think. Term limits ought to apply also to the president of the council. In which case I also add that I strongly feel it should be. Elect, the town council president should be elected from, only from an at-large position. That makes for more competitive race as far as I'm concerned. And it also allows for, let's say we go for two, three-year terms for enough time for new counselors. To come up to speed. I am not assuming that everyone who runs for council position has town government. Experience. In fact, we have seen over the past five years. That to encourage new, new participants in town council, that we have had several. People who have come onto the council without a whole lot of, uh, government experience. I encourage that. That's how we get new diverse voices. So point one. That the town council president have a town, have a, uh, at-large position and secondly. Should the other part of the charter be examined for term limits? That it also applied to the town council president. Thank, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Adrian. Other comments or comments in the chat? Hilda?
What about committee chairmanships? And I have particularly in mind the finance committee, which even with town meeting, um. Had chairs that lasted twelve, thirteen years or more because they knew the budget and how to make the budget.
A good suggestion. I, we, we hadn't been considering that, uh. Yet, the. Yeah, that would have to be written into the rules or, um, probably the rules, I would guess. Yeah, no reason not to rotate the. Leadership around.
Depends on how people interpret acting as chair. Some people who are chairs just run a meeting. And, and keep order where others exercise tremendous amount of power in setting the agenda, et cetera. So again, it's, it's a personal thing, how people interpret the job.
Right, right. Um. Anything in the chat?
Nothing else.
Okay, any other comments or, um, questions?
Actually.
Go ahead, Janet.
Yeah, um. I, I think I still personally favor term limits. Uh, I was slightly convinced by Hill's comments about, uh, learning curve. Um, because I remember seeing, um, in my years in, in, in town meeting. Uh, people come, coming into town meeting, not knowing a thing and getting up and speaking about. Well, never mind, but the point, the point is, it's, it's term, term limits are, are good. Um, and maybe make it three term, three terms instead of two. And that would give them enough time to access, but, but the point is you want to have more people participating. So if, if, if you don't have term limits, then people will just be incumbents for years. So. It's six of one, half dozen of the other.
Yeah, um. Other comments? All right, so we'll move on. We're a little bit ahead of schedule here. Question four. This one's a little, uh, confusing to some people. Um, should the charter be amended? So that all town counselors have an equal voice and vote. Or have, I'm not seeing the end of this, have a voice and vote on an equal number of standing committees?
They don't know?
I will explain. Um, the town, this is the, the section in the charter. Just states that the council can determine its own standing or ad hoc committees, which it did in the first year. The principles in play are, uh. In participation and diversity. So, um. Amherst has, as we know, several organized political groups and two official PACs. And one of the PACs has endorsed a majority of the counselors in each one of our three terms so far. Council committees should include equal participation of counselors elected. To promote both full public participation and diversity of representation. Um, so the council experience is. That in its first term, the council established these four bulleted committees. That you're probably all familiar with. The finance committee, the government, G, what we call the GOL committee. The CRC committee and the TSO committee. Um, uh, the committee chairs, uh, all currently serve on two of these committees. And several counselors neither serve as chair of any committee. Nor serve on more than one standing committee. So membership on a committee gives a counselor a voice. And a vote on that committee's recommendation back to the counselor. So counselors on two standing committees. Have twice as much voice, like they have like two bites of the apple. Whereas some counselors only have one ability, one voice on one committee. And so we're looking at whether. That should be changed either in the rules or in the charter. Um, there is a section of the rules that deals with committees also. So, um. That is sort of an issue of, of inclusive participation or democratic representation. So if you're elected to the council, you have an equal voice. In the committees of the council as on the full council. Uh, do I have another one on this? Let's see. Um. Inclusive participation also applies to the amount of responsibility. And power granted to individual town counselors. And so our potential. Proposal could be that Amherst adopt three member standing committees instead of what they currently have as five member standing committees. Twelve could serve on, we have thirteen counselors, so twelve, all but the president could serve on. One each of four three-member committees. And that would ma, make, that one benefit would be that the counselors would have. Half as much committee work. Um, and the committee chairs would only serve on one committee. So that is just one idea about how this could be solved. Um, so comments?
So Michael has one in the chat. I'll just read it and then Michael, you can chime in if you have more. I think with the limited number of people on here, it's okay to have a little bit of back and forth. So. Uh, Michael says I would seriously suggest that counselors not sit on standing committees, but that all town residents, not voters. Can volunteer to serve. This is a more extreme solution to the issue that Darcy is discussing. I'm not quite sure what, but that all town residents, not voters. I'm not sure what that means. Michael, maybe you could explain.
Are you there, Michael?
Okay, the next, uh, we'll see if he comes on. The next is, uh. Adrian, please explain the difference between the rules, the counselors adopt and the charter.
Well, okay, so I said I'm, I, I'm very challenged by listening and, and, and putting my, my thoughts into the chat. So I. I wanted a very hopeful description of the following. Once counselor. The charter has explicit directions, but once counselors are seated, they adopt their rules. Those rules dictate a lot of what goes on within their power. Their authorities and their responsibilities. This is an area that I'm certain that most Amherst people are just not aware of. So it goes back to, um, it goes back to the whole issue. That you started this forum with, and that is taking a look at the charter. The areas that we are able to comment on and change and those areas that we have the most impact on. We have no impact on the rules of procedure. Once we elect the thirteen counselors. So everything that has come before is exceedingly important. Be it term limits for counselors, be it term limit for the president or any of the other issues that, um, you're dealing with today. Help us out here. Thanks so much.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Kitty? Okay, so it's, it's, it's not. As I understand it, in the charter, the charter does not currently say how many committees there should be. Nor how many people should be on each committee. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, correct.
So, so are we?
Self-determined, Kitty.
What?
It's determined by virtue, well, Darcy could respond to that. But those committees and who chairs and what the makeup of the committee is at the discretion and choice of the, uh, council president. Darcy, help us out.
She created them. Um, and they have been, but they have been, their, their structure and organization has been voted on. Yeah, they've been changed somewhat since the beginning.
And it's outside the charter.
They've always had.
Very clear. It's outside the charter.
Right, the ability to appoint committees is in the charter. That's it. So what, what this is, what we're doing here is, um, thinking about what would be great. And then the charter commission could make that as a, a, not a recommendation to put into the charter. But as a best practices kind of recommendation. Is that, is that? It could be either way. They, they might say, we, we have decided that this should just be in your rules. Or they could say, we, we, we think this is important enough. And, and want to make sure it gets in the way we want it, therefore we want it in the charter. But they may also just say, we think this is a, a council decision. To get into this level of detail and we want, but we recommend that you put it in your rules. Okay, and, and I have another question, and that is current practice. Right now, I, is it true that the counselors, um, express in writing their preferences for what committees they want to be on? And then the president looks at those and decides who's going to be on what committee? Yes. Okay, and, and, and that so, that some counselors say, oh, I'd like to be on these, you know, say four. I, I forget how many they're supposed to serve on four committees, but then they only get appointed by the president to just like one committee? Sometimes, does that happen? Well, there's only four major standing committees, although there are some, there are other committees, but the four major committees are what we're talking about here. So if they, okay, I'd like to be on these two committees. No one serves on more than two. So the question is, uh, the difference between being on two committees and one. So if they say, I'd like to be on these two committees, say the finance committee and the GOL. The president has the option of saying, no, I think we'll only put you on GOL. She could, yeah.
Can we, um, go to Michael? Cause he has his hand up. So I think that means he's prepared to explain his comment.
Yes, uh, first of all, in terms of my chat comment, I wrote it hastily. But the important point, I take this very seriously. And this, this overlaps with several other things that the league is going to be discussing over the next Sundays. But I think that this is a marvelous way to increase public participation. Of residents, not only voters. I should have said not only voters. Because, uh, we have so many residents, including high school students. Who are very much concerned with town government and very much able to participate in town government. And we have a terrible problem with fatigue on the council. We've lost counselors because of fatigue. And that's because these committee meetings. Not only they, do they provide the kind of double dipping that, uh, Darcy was talking about, but they. Just make it almost impossible for any counselor to keep abreast of what's happening. Because they have to serve so many hours sitting at, at board meetings and so on. So I think, uh, and the other thing is that if you recall, at the beginning, there was a committee on appointments. Which recommended appointments to other committees. And that was not considered to be successful for reasons I won't go into. And it was abolished. And I think that the power of appointment is another thing the league might well look at. And if the committee was not a good idea, maybe there are ways of mitigating the power of the presidency in the area of appointments too. But I would love to see council committees be a way that more participants in town could serve in town government.
Thank you for that explanation. I see that now, what you meant. Okay, uh, Hilda?
Okay, I would like to add on to what Michael just said and, and committees in general. Including the ones that are appointed by the town manager are, shall I say incestuous in that. I really think that there needs to be more checks and balances, and I think that could happen by having more townspeople serve on committees. I know people who have applied to be on the Historical Commission, which has had vacancies for years. And also the local Historic District Commission has had vacancies. It's taking forever to get them filled because people that I know who have applied, who would be very good, are not considered suitable by management. And I could go into more detail about that, but I would rather not on a recorded meeting. But, but, but no, I know that, that I, I wanted these committees to write about them for the, and they, and there are vacancies. And they have been going on now for more than a year, and it's, it's, I don't know, the, the zoning board has, has several vacancies that, that are currently extended, and it's taking a very long time, number one, to get enough people to apply in order for them to have a meeting to appoint somebody. So, um, there just seems to be a lot of apathy about what's going on in town. I don't know whether it's COVID-related or whether it's to this government-related, but it never seemed to be a problem to get people to run for town meeting in districts that had a lot of residents. Districts like one and three, that were the old precincts, one and three, that had a lot of students. Yes, there were unfilled seats, but when you have a body of two hundred and fifty-two people, which includes the ad hoc people, you have a lot more diversity than we have in this current government. So finding ways to expedite appoint, committee appointments, I think would be valuable. And as Michael said, to get more people on, on, um, these committees that are just councillors. What's happening on the committees now is a lot of time is being spent on zoning amendments, which are legal to begin with. And that message hasn't gotten through, and did all the new rental registration bylaw has a lot of things to it that are very bad, that, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Are also illegal. And, and I, um, anyway, those, those problems that need to be addressed, which putting more people on might help.
Your three minutes are up.
Yeah, and Hilda, the, and others, you know, we are going to have two other discussion sessions too, where some of these other related issues are going to come up, um, and we can give, get input on those also. So are we ready to move on to the next question?
Yes.
I guess Marla.
Hi, folks. Um, this is Marla Jamait. I've been working with Darcy, uh, Julian and, uh, Janet um, on the task force, and I'm gonna kind of give, uh, Darcy a break from, uh, leading for a few minutes. Um, so question five. Should the charter be amended so that no sole member of the town council can unilaterally postpone a discussion? Um, this is something that has come up. Over the last few years, the, uh, relevant charter section, it's two-point-one-oh bylaws and other measures. It establishes this right to postpone. On the first occasion that the question on adoption of a non-emergency matter is put to the town council, if a single member present objects to the taking of the vote, the vote shall be postponed until the next meeting. The use of this right shall have privilege over all motions. And I'm not going to bother to read the rest, uh, but once invoked, a debate on the measure ceases. The rationale for possible amendment, um, the, the league's good government principles include widespread and inclusive participation and the presence of checks and balances. The current right to postpone, it contravenes these principles by enabling a sole councillor to halt an ongoing discussion without having to explain or defend their reasons for doing so. The existing language does not require that the council weigh the pros and cons of halting the discussion. And Darcy, if we can see the next one. Um, so the council experience, uh, the right to postpone has been used a handful of times. Um, it has prompted both public and intra-council criticism. December twenty-one, twenty-twenty, a councillor, a councillor invoked the right to postpone discussion about whether the town manager's office should begin drafting changes to the zoning bylaw. In that case, the councillor maintained there were, there had been insufficient opportunities for input on proposed zoning priorities. More recently, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, uh, town councillor invoked the right to postpone during a heavily attended meeting with the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee, stating that she needed time to think in solitude. I don't know, some of you probably were watching this meeting. That moved postponed discussion of police department response to a call from a housing complex the previous summer. There was public concern about how the police handled that call. A motion was on the table at that October seventeenth meeting to refer the incident for further study. The town council president later apologized publicly for not having tried to block use of the right to postpone that night. So best practices, Amherst Charter language on the right to postpone, it's similar to some other towns, Randolph, Winthrop and Bridgewater. However, not all municipalities grant the single member right to postpone. Uh, the right to postpone is similar in parliamentary terms to what's called a point of personal privilege. It doesn't require a, a second, no vote by the full bodies required. Personal privilege is generally reserved for members, for, for measures to assure the well-being of a councillor or the assembled body. For example, if a councillor feels it's much, much too hot in the meeting room, um, and they're about to pass out and, and, you know, insist, you know, madam chair, the air conditioning must be turned on now. You know, that's kind of a use of a point of personal privilege. If a town councillor wishes to postpone a discussion, they can use procedures that better align with principles of inclusive participation and checks and balances, such as just making a motion to postpone, um, which then requires a second and a majority vote. Um, Amherst could eliminate the right to postpone entirely or could amend it to require a second by another councillor. Do we have any questions or comments related to the right to postpone? Rebecca, I wonder if there's anything?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so the right to postpone, I remember I was there at that amazing meeting about, um, Community Safety Working Group. It's like the call, call the vote. It's like calling the vote, right? I make a mo-, I, I call the vote. And somebody else can say, I pose, I close off discussion. Is that correct?
I would say no. I, I think it, it's much more abrupt. Like, if you ca-, call the question, then there would be a vote of all those who were in favor. Um, and a, a vote would follow that call of the question. This just simply, uh, postpones discussion. This is a, it, it's, that's why it's called a privilege. It's, uh, something that a councillor can put into effect simply because they have been elected to the town council and for any reason.
So it's more like, um, a point of order. Point of order, and then everything stops, and the councillor who said point of order has total control. Okay, thank you.
Darcy?
Yeah, I have, I have, uh, um, I'm just putting in my personal opinion here, and that is uh, that I use this, I was the first example there that part, Marla gave. And I used it two times when I was in the council, and it can definitely be abused. But it's also a tool that the minority can use. To, for example, say something came up in December during winter holidays, and the public was not aware of what was going on, and you wanted to make sure they knew. And that might be a reason why someone in the minority would want to move to postpone a, a vote. So that was, that was at least one of the instances in which I did it. Because I felt like nobody knew what was happening. So I think, I, I sort of feel like it's a tool in the toolbag that can be used by the minority, but it can also be abused by anyone who happens to want to abuse it. So, um, it, it, it can be very inappropriately used, that's for sure. Um, so I, I'm of two minds on this.
If I may, I mean, so among, uh, the task force, some of the discussion that we've had about this has focused on the question of impulsivity, and that under the current structure, um, any individual councillor who maybe just does not like what's going on, or doesn't like what's on the floor, can invoke this right to postpone. Um, and, and it could be for deeply personal reasons. Um, and so it raises questions, um, about fairness. And, 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 you know, is this power something that should be granted if it may be, may be abused? So anyway, I just wanted to toss that in. I see there's hands.
Yep, Mike, Michael?
Well, I, I, I'm sympathetic. Am I, I can't tell if I'm muted. No, I think I'm all right. Sympathetic to what Darcy said, but I, I still think this is an inappropriate practice, whether for good reasons or bad. We have a process which I hope tries to be as democratic as possible, and this is about as far from being democratic as possible. So I, I just, I see no reason for having this provision. And I look at the federal government, I love what happens at, uh, standing committees in the senate and the House of Representatives, where one person can do something similar to this. And it shuts down the, the business of the people. So I'm just opposed to it, even though it could be used for what I might consider to be good reasons.
Thank you. Adrian?
Oh, thank you. Uh, I couldn't agree more with Michael, and I'd like to say this, that the right to postpone, in my view, with long legs and legislative bodies, not only in town but nationally, the right to postpone is so anti-community, anti-democratic, anti-representative. And as a viewer of a majority of council meetings where I have witnessed this, I feel that it absolutely rips the rug under any, any other option. So I, I don't like this right to postpone, and I hope to see it go by way of, of history. It takes away the opportunity to discuss, uh, to have a motion made to discuss, to bring it to the floor to a vote. That's democratic.
Thank you. So we'll take one more, cause I'm cognizant of the time. Janet?
Yeah, um, I, I resent the fact that one person can, can have that kind of power. And I wondered if, if it could be changed such that sometimes the temperature at a meeting is such that it really is important for everyone to go home, cool down, and have further conversation at the next meeting. But that shouldn't be one person. That should be the group or a certain percentage of the group. So is there, uh, any thought in our discussion here, is who might be involved in, in, in a, in a potential postponement?
Janet, uh, one thing that we have discussed is that, uh, if the right to postpone were to remain, that it could be amended and at least require a second. So that requirement second would then kind of, uh, get the ball rolling, you know, um, and raise the question of, is this something that ought to happen now? And wouldn't be more likely to produce some discussion rather than a just sort of unilateral stoppage. So, yes, it, it, you know, it could be revised in a bunch of ways, require a second. If, if it, if it were eliminated, you know, there are still all these other ways in which postponement can be achieved. You could just make a motion. You could move to postpone. There's nothing to prevent a councillor from doing that. You know, rather than using a unilateral power to, to achieve it.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Darcy, if you wouldn't mind moving the slides along. Thank you. So question six, should the three non-voting resident members of the finance committee each have a vote? So the rationale, um, the finance committee advises the town council on all the town's financial, um, matters. The charter states, "The finance committee may include members of the public who shall have a voice but no vote in the finance committee's deliberations." So the current town's structure, it includes five town councillors who are all voting members and three residents who are not. Or there are slots for three residents, not all are, are occupied. Under the state law, though, all members of the finance committee are considered municipal employees for purposes of the Conflict of Interest Law, and all are subject to state statutory requirements. The principles of widespread and inclusive participation require that residents who undertake the responsibility of serving be allowed to vote, uh, while the lack of a vote is a disincentive to serve for those who might otherwise bring individual expertise to the finance committee. And Darcy, if you can please go to the next slide. The council experience, uh, the non-voting status of the resident members is, has led to difficulty filling the opens, open positions. For vacancy posted in February, just two applications were submitted, a number which was not considered sufficient by a town council subcommittee for an interview process to begin. So again, um, this is a position which requires a lot of responsibility, uh, generally, uh, a fair amount of expertise and experience, yet at the same time, the individuals serving in those resident roles have no rights, and so there's a disincentive created there. Best practices, uh, I found this on the town of Gosham's webpage. A finance committee is the official fiscal watchdog for the town. Because it is difficult for all taxpayers to be completely informed about every aspect of a town's finances, finance committees were established so a representative group of taxpayers could conduct a thorough review of municipal finance questions on behalf of all citizens. A finance committee on which ordinary resident members cannot vote risks losing its ability to function as a fiscal watchdog, and it may not be able to provide the checks and balances needed for optimal government functioning. So, any questions or comments?
Janet? Janet, you have your hand up. Do you, do you want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were calling on Janet Potash. Yeah, no, um, I agree with, uh, the best practices statement. I had considered early on, uh, given my expertise, um, putting, putting my name up for the finance committee, and then I said, hey, why should I put all that work in? What, if they don't listen to me, or if I can't raise my hands? So I didn't bother. And certainly, no, I can't, yeah.
Thank you. Michael?
Well, I would go further, as I said before. I think that councillors should not be members of the finance committee. I like the Gosham statement. The finance committee does not represent town government, represents the taxpayers. And, uh, I think all members of the finance committee should have a vote, and all members of the finance committee should be outside of the town council.
Okay, and we have one comment. I question, so Joan Rayben, I questioned this, and a charter commission member told me that the resident members I question, so Joan Ray, then I questioned this and a charter commission member told me that the resident members were appointed by the town manager who is not elected, so they cannot vote. Is this true?
No, they're not, they're, they're appointed by the town council. The, the Governance Committee makes a, interviews them, makes a recommendation and brings it back to the town council. So they're, they are appointed, but they're appointed by the town council.
Joan, do you want to expand?
No, that was, that was my question during the creation of the charter. I, I saw that. So what I was, the explanation I was given sounds like it was incorrect. But it also means that the town council is just very powerful in that they are the town council and they also not an independent finance committee, which we've always had before. So, so I, I agree with some of the comments that have just been made.
Yes, Joan, I, I think that that's an accurate assessment. I mean, at the moment, the, it is sort of wholly a committee of the town council where the only voting members are in fact town council members. And so although those who are residents, you know, certainly could continue to advise the committee offer perspective, you know, they, they cannot play a role in, in any decision-making on that committee.
Marla, did you find out who in our previous form of government appointed the resident members of the Finance Committee?
I believe it was the town meeting moderator.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
It is correct.
Yes, because I was approached by Bill Field several years ago. And I was heavily involved and had, I had, I had to turn him down. So yes, it was a moderator.
Are we just a point of order? Are we trying to finish at 3:30?
If we can, if we can, yeah.
We have one more to do?
No.
No, okay, good.
We have, we do have one more slide.
Okay.
Is there any more comments on, on this topic?
Yeah, there's one in the, Janet asks, what article in the Charter covers Finance Committee?
What did we say here?
Yeah, Darcy, I think if you just go up, it, the, it should be cited there. I don't know, did that, I'd somehow get killed. It might have. I can find that out for you.
It's Article VII.
Is it Article VII?
Why you, you started off with saying that you were gonna go up to Article VII, okay. All right, last slide.
So basically, we are, we know that we don't, we haven't covered everything in Article II and everything in Article VII and nor have we heard all of your ideas and thoughts. So if you would like to send any remaining comments to us, you could send it, send them to Julian at this email address. And if you could put in the topic line LWVA Charter comments so that we can then integrate any additional comments that you have. And we're going to be reaching out to, you know, we did talk to the Charter Commission, former Charter Commissioners, some of them, and we're, we're reaching out to the town counselors too.
I put my hands up because I'd like to commend the task force. I think this is a well-planned, well-organized meeting. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And whoever sends me an email, feel free, I'll probably respond with, yes, received, we got it, and we'll look into it, unless you put something that really piques my interest, then good job to you.
And we'll have this information in the next e-Bulletin with the, the next few dates. Darcy, can you go to, back to that slide?
Yes.
I think it was all the way at the beginning. There we go. There we go. So our next meeting will be Sunday, April 14. We appreciate you coming back on for that. It will be run in a similar manner. And I can't see everyone right now, but it looks like most of you are members of the League of Women Voters. If you're not a member, I encourage you to join. You just go to our website, just Google League of Women Voters of Amherst. There's a big button that says join and then you can participate in the April, the June 2 meeting when we're trying to come to consensus on the issue, on the different points that we might lobby when the town charter review starts. So.
I would just add that I mistakenly said Article VII for financial policies. It's Article V. And at the next, on April 14, we'll be talking about Article III, which is all about the town manager powers, et cetera. The incorporation powers, that's Article I, and elections, Article VII. So again, there'll be like selected, selected potential amendments, not every possible thing. But if you have other ideas, we, we're interested in hearing them. And then on May 5, public participation and the transition procedures that were put into the Charter, you know, the possible suggestion that they be, we recommit to them.
You know, I was wondering, looking at this and thinking about it, have we considered sending copies of the current Charter to all League members to remind them that we are studying this and you should review it?
We have not, but it's, we don't, we wouldn't have to send a copy. We could send a link. Because you can view it on the internet.
We can certainly put that into our next e-Bulletin.
Yeah.
I think a, a copy means, means business. A link means you've got to spend time and if you want printouts, you've got to go to your printer and download. I'm sorry. I say.
Hilda, do you have a quick comment?
I just wanted to say that I was so angry when, when you guys decided not to protest this charter, which was the worst of the, the three or more that we did protest, that I quit.
Okay, Hilda, thank you.
To make that public.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
I did not like the fact that you guys did not take a more rigorous stand against this awful charter.
Well, I can say that I was president at the time and there was absolutely no consensus, so we could not take a position. All right. No, Hilda, that's it. Janet.
I mean, this is, I'm, I'm a member of the committee, so I'm not supposed to be wasting your time on questions, but I, looking at the Charter, which I'm mostly unfamiliar with, Section 5.2 refers to a budget coordinating group. Is that the Finance Committee these days?
No, the Budget, Budget Coordinating Group includes the town council, members of the town.
It doesn't seem to be.
Library trustees.
So I still can't find the Finance Committee in the Charter.
It's, it's mentioned in Article V.
Maybe that can be part of our next e-Bulletin too, if you want to look for that. So I think we're, we're three minutes past. And you can write some more to the, to the committee. You can certainly just go through the League website also. And we look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks on April 14.
And please email me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.